Education meeting room on the north wall. With that, Cecilia, would you call the role?
Born.
Here.
Block.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Head, I haven't heard from him yet. Herschenbach is out of town. Johnson.
Here.
And Logan.
Here.
Five present.
All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. Agenda item number two, Cecilia sent the board packet out recently, so any adjustments, comments on the meeting, in, uh, the meeting minutes from the September 2nd meeting?
I'm, I'm gonna move for approval of the minutes to the OSERS board meeting held Thursday, September 2nd, 2021.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, further comments? Cecilia?
Logan. Block.
Yes.
Johnson.
Uh, yes.
Erdnberger.
Yes.
Born.
Aye.
Uh, five ayes.
They are approved. Next on the agenda was discussion or potential action on the Ice Miller compliance audit update. Unfortunately, the Ice Miller team was unable to be here in present or in person or on the phone, they're actually on an airplane, so they sent an email, which I'd like to read into the record. This is from Robert Nosse at Ice, um, at Ice Miller, there we go. Members of the board, we apologize for the scheduling conflict that prevents us from being able to present to you for today's meeting. As we discussed during our prior presentations, we were confident that we would meet the deadlines for our compliance reviews, so we are pleased to report that we have already provided OSERS with two different compliance reports. Number one, a report based on our review of the plan document as written, and two, a report based on the plan in operation. We have submitted some follow-up questions and comments to OSERS so that we can complete our analysis. We intend to work with the OSERS team over the next few weeks to complete our analysis and reports. Certainly, we welcome your questions and will respond to them through Ms. Carter. Our best regards, Rob and Audra. So with that, I guess if you have any questions about the status of the compliance report, please let Cecilia know and, and she'll get those comments pushed out to the rest of the board and to, and to ICE. Okay? So, go ahead, Jane.
Yeah, can I just ask a question? I think it's of Cecilia, so I don't know what the process for this is, but they said that they have already reported, I mean, delivered two reports to Cecilia?
Yes. Yes, on Friday and Monday of this week.
You're not on.
On Friday and Monday of this week, I received draft reports with some questions, so we're looking them over now and pulling the answers together. They're not ready for draft dissemination to the board yet.
No, that's fine, so what do you anticipate generally the timeline to be? You're gonna look at the reports, you're gonna get them back to Ice Miller, and we will have drafts-ish?
For the November meeting.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you very much.
All right, any further questions?
And you know how I like to get those thicker documents out a little bit ahead of time.
Any other questions or thoughts around the Ice Miller compliance audit? So we'll have that as an agenda item at the next meeting. Agenda item number four, discussion potential action, the Nebraska State Investment Officer update on OSERS investment performance as of June 30th, 2021. Michael Wallman Newman, Nebraska State Investment Officer, and Max Coterie with Aon are here to present the second quarter 21, 2021 performance report and the 2021 capital market assumptions. So with that, Michael, Max, take it away.
Alrighty. Um, I'm still hearing a big echo from you all, but if, if you're not hearing it, then I'm gonna just plow through. Okay. And you're not hearing that echo then, it's just on my head. Okay. Um, I, I wanna say just a few words at the beginning before we turn it over to Max Coterie of Aon. It's hard to believe that it's already been five years since the Investment Council took on the management of OSERS assets. Um, at the risk of repeating history, you already know, in 2016, Director Carter and I put together a plan to assume, I, there is an echo recently, okay? Oh wait. Okay. It's just a little whistle, I'm gonna do. So, in, in July of 2016, Director Carter and I turned in a transition plan for these assets in anticipation of the legal transfer in January of 2017.
So you can't hear him. Nope, you can't hear. But he didn't do this before. Yeah, I think it's Michael too far. Max, would you try speaking? Yeah, yeah, but there's no feedback. No, we're not. Yeah, he has headphones on, that's why. Max has headphones on. Michael doesn't.
Do you have headphones around? Cause sometimes if you're hearing the echo, maybe putting headphones on helps?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Oh, maybe that's...
Michael, check to see if you're logged in twice.
Coming video gallery, meeting info, meeting notes. Start recording. Ooh, yeah, we do have live captions though.
It's nice to know that I was conscious of this.
Okay, I'm going to stop the meeting and start it all over again, so everybody, everybody log out.
I had to start a meeting to see if we had live captions, I couldn't remember. Cecilia, you can turn on live captions too.
Wait, I'm looking for them.
We shouldn't be getting people out like we are. Is your language English? Yeah.
One, two, three.
Okay. We'll turn this off, that's gonna be annoying. I think it was, oh, it's working now, so.
Perfect. Great to be back.
All right, Michael, go ahead, let's see how it works now.
Director Carter and I put together a transition plan and, so that we'd be ready to hit the ground in, at the turn of 2017 and, and start managing these assets for you. And part of that plan included setting a long-term asset allocation to have your assets, and those of the education employees in Omaha matched the asset allocation for the rest of the education employees in Nebraska. And the Investment Council did that in November of 2016. And at our first meeting after the new year, we transitioned most of the assets to our managers. At that time, the Omaha Plan had just a, less than a third of their assets and equities, for example, and our long-term allocation was almost 60%. And we agreed that we would have a five-year transition target, and here we are already. What we've been able to do in that five years, and you'll see this in the Aon presentation, is get that equity allocation over, over 50%, and that's been to Omaha's benefit. Part of the hindrance in getting you all completely to the allocation of the rest of the education employees is that when we brought in the Omaha Plan assets, almost 60% were in alternative assets, whereas the Council's long-term allocation is 12 and a half. So we've been gradually able to wind down those investments naturally, letting them run off from your all's portfolio. And yet, there are a few that, quite frankly, are gonna be with us because of the nature of the contracts for some time. But still, we think, and you'll see again in the Aon presentation, that we've met our five-year targets and then some, and we're, we're very proud of that. What this has done for, for you and for your beneficiaries is it's moved your portfolio to one that's enjoyed higher returns and less, lower fees, and moved you up in comparison to your peers from your very low position when we took over the assets to a much improved position, and that's good for the long term. Just to remind you about the Investment Council itself, we're the independent state agency charged with investing public funds for the state of Nebraska. And the total amount we manage today is, is 30, 37 billion, you'll see in, in the report as of June, and as you know, a billion and a half of, of that is yours. And I, well, you're all here, you need to know that Director Carter is not just an ex officio member of our eight-member board, but she's a, she is an active member of our Investment Council. And although she may not have a vote, she certainly has a voice, and it's listened to, and she's been a, a great help to me in understanding where Omaha wants to be, and is helping us help you all get there. So with that, I'd like to introduce Max. I know that you're a reconstituted Board of Trustees. Max Coterie is the principal at Aon on the Nebraska account. We've had the relationship with Aon, they're one of the largest consulting, investment consulting groups in the country, and has had the relationship with Nebraska since 2004, so it's a long relationship, it's been very helpful to us, and it's helpful to you, and you're going to hear from Max on both performance, and then also the assumptions for returns of the various asset classes that are used in, not just by us, in building the model and the asset allocation, but you'll also see how forecasts are important for your actuary. So with that, trustees, I, I just wanna tell you heartfelt that we appreciate the cooperation with Director Carter, and that we do treat this relationship as a critical one and an important part of our portfolio. So I thank you for, for your support. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the Council, but I know you're anxious to hear from Max.
Are there any questions for Michael? Jane?
Michael, hi, this is Jane Erd, Michael, this is Jane Erdnberger, I have a quick question on, it looks like it says page 34, it says summary of transition activity, the last line says it is still likely to be several years before the long-term target allocation is reached. What to you is several years?
Um, it could be for one particular investment, it may be as long as 10 years. It's a, of course, the bulk of the investments are already on track, and, but there are some residual investments, and the, I would say the longest may be is with us as long as, as 10 years.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if we were talking 25, 30?
Yeah, no, that's a fair question.
Okay, thank you.
And the way, the question you didn't ask, what I'm gonna answer is how are these, there was some concern when we took over the portfolio, and it was expressed concern by the then Board of Trustees, and stated on the record that in transitioning the funds to the Investment Council, that the Investment Council would immediately transition the assets to mirror those of the rest of the educators in Nebraska, and in doing so incurred large losses and charged those to Omaha. We had a meeting in 2016 because of that concern with members of the Board of Trustees, the OSERS, legislators from our Oversight Committee, and myself to have a discussion, and from that came a memo to, back to the trustees showing clearly that was not our intention, and we've held to that. So the way we've managed the transition on liquid assets is, yeah, we, we fired some managers and put your assets into the managers we had feted. But as far as the illiquid assets, we have not sold ons on the secondary market at a discount, and instead have taken the position that we would not, that we would let them roll off naturally, but we would also help them roll off as quickly as they could by not granting extensions when asked by those asset managers to extend those contracts past the normal expiration date. And so we have stuck to that, and for the most part, held them to their original contract expiration dates, and yet there are some that, because of the nature of the contract, may take up to 10 years.
Okay, no, that's good to know, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You bet. Good question.
Additional questions for Michael? All right, thank you, Michael. Max?
Thank you. Okay, cool. Hello, all, I, I don't think I've met, met all of you, but I'm, I'm Max Coterie from Aon, thanks for, for allowing me to, to join virtually today. Unfortunately, teams in my computer oftentimes don't get along so well. I, I found that when I share my screen, it's best to turn my camera off, otherwise I have a bandwidth issue, so please don't take offense, it's probably not that interesting looking into my basement anyways, but I, I'm gonna turn the camera off here and try to put the materials up on screen. Cecilia, could you give me a thumbs up if it sounds okay, but I was gonna hit performance first and then go to the capital market assumptions if that works? Perfect, okay, thanks. So let me try to share my screen here, and... Can everybody see slides on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we sent along some materials, apologies, they were, they were a bit lengthy. The performance review has three parts to it, there is a somewhat robust capital market review, which is just giving you an update on the equity and bond and alternatives markets. Then we also included the 10-page dashboard that we review with the Council, which covers all of the pools that are under their oversight. Those two sets of materials were really just passed along as an FYI, and what I planned to spend time with you on today was, was what we've got marked as section three here, which is a focus on, on the OSERS portfolio. And I'll move relatively quickly, do, do jump in, let me know if you have any questions as I go through these slides, but just, just wanted to kick it off here first with a, a review of the capital market returns. I was gonna say that unfortunately, these returns are, are a little bit out of date because here we are in early October, talking about returns through 630, but the good news here is really 3Q, returns were pretty flat in both equity and bond markets, so July and August were quite strong in equities, and then we had a pullback in September, and yields kind of moved in opposite directions in July and August versus September as well. So if, if you look at the returns in the equity markets during 3Q, they were sort of plus or minus 1%. If you looked at the bond market, it was effectively flat, so if you were to look at year-to-date performance as of 930, it would look a lot like what we're looking at as a year-to-date, this is 630 here. This is probably not, not news to anyone here, but 2Q, we saw continuation of the very strong equity markets we saw during 1Q, so this, this top box, if you can see my arrow on the screen, these are various equity market indices. You can see returns were anywhere from 4.5 up to 9% during second quarter, depending upon what, what area of the equity market you were looking at, and that brought returns on a year-to-date basis through 630 to anywhere from sort of high single, high single digits to mid-teens, again, depending upon what, what area of the equity market you were looking at. Then we also highlight down here, we've got some bond market indices as well, these are really the two blocks of indexes I'll, I'll mention. You'll probably recall during 1Q of, of this year, we saw yields come up pretty significantly, which caused bond market returns to be very low and quite negative in certain instances. We saw a reversal of that during 2Q, yields came back down a bit, which is why you're seeing positive returns from these bond market indices, the, the ag, which is the broadest measure of US bond market performance, you can see was up about 1.8%, but that was not quite enough to, to offset the losses that we saw in 1Q, so you can see through 630, and this is very similar through 930, the broad market, broad bond market was down about a percent and a half because the yields have, have climbed so far this year. I wanted to touch briefly on, Michael did a good job walking through this, and then there were some good questions about the transition plan, but this just gives you a quick sense of sort of where, where we started four-plus years ago and where we are today. We thought at the outset that it was going to take, I don't know, anywhere from eight to 10 years to kind of get close to the long-term asset allocation that you're seeing on the right. You can see we're about five years in, and we've gone from having 50% plus in alternatives to right around 20%. So we've made some good progress, as Michael alluded to, it's gonna take a while for some of these, particularly these private equity partnerships to roll off, and even after we get down to the same sort of target allocation of 5% and 7.5%, I think it's important to point out that the portfolios, the OSERS defined benefit plan versus the NPR's defined benefit plan are likely to produce somewhat different returns, because even though we're gonna have the same amount in private equity and private real estate, you're gonna have different managers, so some of those legacy OSERS real estate private equity managers are gonna, are gonna still be here for some time. Wanted to just quickly illustrate, and I'll focus, the, the top graph here is looking at quarter over quarter for 2Q, but if you have a look here, down here on the right, this is looking at change in market value for the DB plan for the one-year ended 630-21. Just wanted to highlight sort of what, what a strong period the last year has been in market, so you can see, as of July 1, 2020, the DB plan had about $1.24 billion in assets. Over the next year, there were $40 million in net withdrawals to cover benefit payments, there was $334 million in investment earnings during that same period, so the, the net-net result was the total DB assets went up by about $300 million over the past year from, call it $1.24 billion to, to $1.53 billion, so obviously a very, very strong period in, in capital markets. Here, we're, we're looking at a few different views of trailing period performance for the total portfolio. The top chart is showing you returns over various trailing periods ending 630-2021. The blue bars are the returns of the portfolio, the green bars are the returns of the policy benchmark that we measured against. On a one-year basis, you can see very strong returns on an absolute basis, also outpacing the, the returns of the, the benchmark index. If you look over longer-term periods, you'll see pretty strong returns on an absolute basis, but you will see some margin of, of sort of lagging relative to the total portfolio benchmark. A lot of that is coming from underperformance from those same legacy alternatives allocations that we talked about, and we'll, we'll give you a little bit more color on that here in a moment. We won't spend a ton of time on these other charts, but just to let you know what we're looking at here, the bottom left is showing you quarterly performance relative to the benchmark, so if you see a green bar sticking down to the south, that means the portfolio underperformed its benchmark, and it's showing you the magnitude, if you see a blue bar sticking up, that's showing the magnitude of our performance. And this chart here on the bottom right is kind of rolling all that together on a 10-year basis and showing you how the portfolio performed relative to the, the total fund benchmark we measured against. This .83 is telling you that for every dollar you would have earned in the benchmark, had you earned the benchmark return over the past decade, you earned about 83 cents in the portfolio, and again, that's because you, you can see a, a annualized deficit relative to benchmark of about 2% over the 10-year period. This is a very busy page, let me just try to give you a, a quick sense of what's here, so this is a peer comparison, this is looking at public funds with over a billion dollars in assets, so similar plans to, to OSERS. On the bottom of the page here, population is telling you how many other plans are in each, each period that we're evaluating. Right above that, we've got the distribution of returns, so fifth percentile, first percent, or first quartile, so 25th percentile, median, third quartile, and 95th percentile, so that's the, the distribution in each given period. And then we show the total OSERS portfolio return, the policy benchmark return, and where each ranked, what percentile the universe here. Again, this is pretty busy, so we tried to graphically depict it too, so it was a little bit easier to take in. As Michael mentioned earlier, on the shorter-term periods, we've seen some pretty strong peer relative performance, so you can see over the quarter, top quartile, over the one-year period, above, above median, on a three-year basis, right around median. If you look out over the longer term, you can see returns still, still tend to lag relative to peers.
Max, you might show that in this case, a high number is not what you're looking for.
Yeah, so, so here, you, on, this is a percentile, so 12, you want to be, you're in the 12th percentile, that's good, 90- 92 here is the 92nd percentile, so 1 is kind of best, 99 is worse. But thanks, Michael. Probably good to clarify that. Just let me do a quick run through the portfolio. So, we talked about sort of top-line results. I realize there may be some new board members, just to orient folks. So, from an equity perspective, the portfolio is relatively simple. We take most of our active equity risk within the global portfolio, which is entirely active. If you look at the US equity portfolio and the non-US equity portfolio, they are predominantly passive. There is a small investment with DFA, which is an active small-cap manager, but the vast majority of the US and the international monies are invested passively. The global allocation is where we think we have the best chance to add value relative to broad market indices. This portfolio had struggled a bit until maybe a year or so ago, but you can see it's really turned it around. So, on a one-year basis, if you run your finger down the various managers, everybody with the exception of MFS, MFS has more or less tracked the global equity market. The other managers have outperformed by anywhere from 6 to 14 percentage points. So, we've gotten pretty strong performance, both on an absolute sense and in a relative sense, out of the global equity portfolio. Just a few comments to make on this page. So, here, we've got the fixed income portfolio. Relative to Empers, this portfolio is a bit more conservative. So, here, we're only investing in core and core-plus, very high-quality fixed income managers. The reason for that is we've had this heavy allocation to legacy alternatives. We think there's a fair amount of risk in some of those portfolios, so we wanted to keep the fixed income allocation a bit safer, a bit cleaner. We, right now, are going through a broader review of the fixed income allocation for Empers and what will be Ossers. That should be hopefully wrapping up toward the end of this year. We would expect that heading into 2022, you may see some changes to the fixed income portfolio and see us start to incorporate some of the, what we call, return-seeking fixed income strategies into the Ossers fixed income portfolio. So, let me, I'll quickly hit on some of the alternatives composites here. So, a few things to mention. So, one, the hedge fund composite, we're down to a single manager. You might note you're seeing zeros here for the returns out to one year. This manager has not been able to produce a valuation statement since 2019. And so, when books closed for the custodian as of 630-21, the last valuation we had was as of, I think it was mid-year 2019. So, that's why you're seeing no returns here. When Vacaro was able to produce a valuation, we'll obviously update these returns accordingly.
Hi, I've got a quick question about that. When they do not give us a valuation report, does the purchase contract or anything give us any recourse, or are there any consequences for not delivering? Because that means we don't actually know what the value of that asset is and haven't for two years.
So, I think, and Michael will be able to maybe add some additional color here, but we've already put in a full redemption for this portfolio. And in their contract, they have the ability to pay back over a period of time. But I want to say that they've already, and again, Michael can add color, I think he's had some direct conversations, but I think Vacaro has already sort of gone beyond the time that they had to pay Ossers back the proceeds from any redemption. So, I don't know that there's legal recourse beyond, the manager has effectively been terminated and we've asked for the money back. The Vacaro is sort of struggling to produce sort of the proceeds, but it is an issue that I think we're looking to have wrapped up in the next several months. But Michael, I know you've had some conversations with the manager, so perhaps you want to provide a bit more color.
The direct answer to the question is that we're having conversations with Vacaro. The conversations are of a legal nature and best discussed in a closed session.
Thank you.
But I'm taking my glasses off. Can you, I'm not sure if you can see me or not, so there's nothing between us. We're having serious conversations and have been for a period of time. And the contract with Vacaro, of course, that predates us, is one... is a difficult contract.
I guess I just wanted to confirm that we weren't treating it as normal business practice to have not delivered evaluation. I'm gonna leave it up to you what best practice is from your perspective, but thank you. You've told me what I need to know. Thank you.
I'm hoping you can see it. I wish, I told Cecilia I was gonna drive over today, and she said, "No, you don't need to," but tell me you can see me. Looking right at you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, very good question, one that we've been thinking about on our side, too. So, moving on, just have to hit for the other composites. So, you can see, real assets have been quite positive relative to benchmark on a year-to-date basis. That's been driven by a rebound from the remaining investment that's of any scale. So, JP Morgan Global Maritime, you can see, is up about 27.5% on a year-to-date basis versus the real assets benchmark, which is up 10.5%. If you go out over a longer-term time period, you can see that the real assets composite has tended to struggle. JP Morgan Global Maritime has not been a terribly successful investment, and you're also feeling a pretty material write-down from BTG, which was a timber investment, as that partnership paid back over the past year or two. On the private equity side, a kind of a similar story. So, year-to-date, fantastic performance on an absolute basis and relative to benchmark. There were some write-ups in that portfolio. If you go out further, you can see returns have been somewhat disappointing. This is being compared to the Burgess All-US Equity, Private Equity Universe. Think of that as sort of median performance of other private equity managers. And then, finally, sort of wrapping up here, and I'll hit a couple of points on the individual managers here in a moment, but the real estate composite, you can see, similar story. Pretty good performance relative to benchmark. Actually, very good over the last year, so up 12% over longer-term periods. Performances has tended to lag a bit. Just wanted to mention, so we were looking at time-weighted returns on the past few pages for the various composites. We do that because we need to roll up performance to the total portfolio level. If you want to evaluate the performance of alternatives managers, you typically want to go with IRRs. Here, we're looking at the IRRs of each alternative manager since inception with the Ossers portfolio. And again, you can see kind of a mixed bag of performance. Pretty decent results from the private equity portfolio, although, you know, 6% for an investment initiated in 2012 or 6.5% in 2001, probably hasn't kept pace with the public equity markets. So, decent results, but probably not ultimately what we were going for or what Ossers was going for when it made the investment. On the real assets front, you can see the timber investment over its full life earned about 1%. JP Morgan Global Maritime has earned a negative return. And then, real estate, some very successful returns from the core real estate managers that go back to the late 90s. And again, more of a mixed bag from some of the more aggressive real estate managers initiated over the past 10 years. The last thing I wanted to hit, and then open up to any questions, if there are any. So, we've got fees on this last page here. The all-in, just note, this does not factor in carried interest, but the base management fee for the total portfolio is about 43 basis points. That has come down over the past several years as we've liquidated several of the alternatives allocations, which tend to have higher fee burden. So, I want to say, three, four years ago, this number was in the low 50s. Fees coming down has certainly been accreted to total portfolio net returns. So, let me pause there. Are there any questions on any of the performance slides that we've covered?
Doesn't look like it, Max.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop sharing momentarily, and then let me see if I can put up the capital markets presentation. All right, let me go ahead and share again. Okay, can everybody see the slides?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So, again, I believe there's some new board members here, so wanted to, just at a very high level, give you a brief overview of what we're talking about. So, we at Aon formulate capital market assumptions, and what we're talking about there is assumptions for forward-looking returns, forward-looking volatility, and forward-looking correlation between the various asset classes. We look out 10 and 30 years, so those are our two sets of assumptions. We tend to prefer 10, but we also include 30-year projections in these materials as well. We, one thing to note here, we're gonna provide a sort of a point over 10 years or 30 years and say, "Here's our 10-year assumption, here's our 30-year assumption." But that's gonna be the median expectation. There's obviously going to be error bands around that median, so just wanted to sort of make it clear that we're gonna provide you the median, but there's a 50% chance that the ultimate return will be better than that, a 50% chance it'll be worse. We can pretty much guarantee that the returns won't be sort of exactly aligned with our Another thing I would note, we update these assumptions quarterly, but the council has asked, just so we don't have 100 different sets of numbers floating around, that we only share our assumptions formally on an annual basis. So, we use our assumptions that are formulated with market inputs as of 630. And so, what we're gonna be looking at today is what we call our 3Q capital market assumptions, but those are based on sort of market inputs as of June 30. Our forecasts here are going to be what we call beta or market returns. They really don't, with a few exceptions, they really don't factor in active manager performance. So, just note that as you look at these projections here, if you have managers that do better than markets or worse, that would obviously impact the projections that we're showing here. What we show on three is our 10-year assumptions for a selection of asset classes. These are our compound return assumptions and our volatility or standard deviation assumptions. So, on a 10-year basis, you can see we're looking at equity returns that are anywhere from 6% to 7% on a compound basis, depending upon sort of the region that you're looking at. And we're looking at fixed income returns that are quite low, call it just south of 2%. And that's really a function of how low yields are today and what the market is currently forecasting for future rises in yields. I show our 30-year assumptions here, too. Again, I mentioned that we typically like to focus on our 10-year assumptions, but we show 30 as well. You're gonna see that 30-year assumptions are a little bit higher than our 10-year assumptions. That is really owing to some mean reversion. So, one question we'll probably get when we open this up is geez, 5%, 6% for equity seems very low. That is true. That is sort of certainly low relative to our historical assumptions. If we have sort of more time to bake in, getting back to something approaching quote-unquote "normal," you'll see a slightly higher assumption. That holds true for fixed income as well. So, you can see our core fixed income assumption, which was just south of 2 on a 10-year basis, goes to about 2.5% on a 30-year basis.
Quick question. Could you explain what expected risk volatility means? That's not an interest rate return, it's the percentage chance that that's the rate we're gonna get, or what?
Yeah, so, expected risk is volatility or standard deviation around that return. So, think of that. I mentioned at the outset that when we provide our assumptions, it's going to be the midpoint of a range. So, if you asked us, over the next 30 years, what do you think equity markets will return? We've got a forecast that gets sort of narrower over time, but the central point of that forecast on a 30-year basis is 6.4, and there is a sort of range around that forecast. And the size of that expected risk or volatility number is giving you a sense for the size of that range. And we're gonna have an exhibit here in a couple of slides that will hopefully give you a sense at the total portfolio level, how to think about that standard deviation or volatility around the central forecast.
Thank you.
You bet. And I think now, turning our asset class forecasts into forecasts for the total portfolio, what we've done here is on the far left, we've got the long-term policy allocation. And then, so these are the targets for the Empers and the Ossers portfolio, realizing that the Ossers portfolio is sort of not quite at these targets and won't be for a few more years at least. These are our assumed returns by asset class and then our assumed volatility. And we start with 10-year forecasts, and then we go with the 30-year forecast as well. And you can see, when we roll it all together, we get a total portfolio forecasted return of 5.7%. And that's again, the sort of the median outcome, with a standard deviation of 12.3%. And on a 30-year basis, we get a forecasted return of 6.2%, the standard deviation of 12.7%. And again, on the next slide, we'll show sort of visually what that standard deviation means. Just a couple other points I would make on this slide. If you were to look at how this looked relative to our forecasts from last year, the answer is relatively similar. So, our equity forecasts have actually come down, as equities were very, very strong over the past year. But our fixed income forecasts have come up a bit because yields have risen, and so higher yields will lead to sort of higher fixed income forecasts. And so, net-net, our assumptions at a total portfolio level are relatively unchanged. The other point I would make here is these assumptions are obviously lower than the portfolio assumed rate. So, the current assumed rate for Ossers is 7.5. On a median forecasted basis, we think you're gonna fall short of that, although again, these are just medians, and there's a distribution around that range, which is a good transition to the next slide. So, here, we've tried to translate what that risk or volatility figure means in terms of the distribution of outcomes that we think are possible over the next 10 and 30 years. And so, the way to look at this chart, and I'll look at the, I'll focus on the 10-year chart, is on a median basis, so our baseline forecast for the portfolio over the next decade is a 10-year return on an annualized basis of 5.7%. If things go better than median, so if we have a better economic environment, if GDP is stronger than we're thinking from a baseline perspective, we need to do better than that. The 25th percentile of our forecast is for an 8.3% return on annualized basis over the next decade. And if things go fantastically well, think of this as almost a two-standard deviation event, sort of to the upside, we think you could earn as much as 12.2% per annum over the next decade. On the flip side of that, if things aren't as good as the baseline forecast, if we enter a recession or GDP growth isn't as strong, we think you could earn about 3.1% per annum on an annualized basis. If you're at the very bottom of our forecasted distribution of outcomes, this is kind of a two-standard deviation downside event, we think returns could be as low as negative And then, translating that into probabilities, if you were to ask us, you know, I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. If you were to ask us from a probability perspective, what do you think our odds are of sort of earning 7.5%? That would fall kind of right between the 50th and 25th percentile here. There's about a 1 in 3 chance, we think, of the portfolio return being 7.5% or better over the next decade. I'm gonna skip the next few slides. This was a document that was presented to the council and covered some of their endowments, but I did want to hit a couple of other slides before I open it up to any questions. But this is just to give you a sense of how Aon's capital market assumptions have evolved over time. So, on the right, we have our assumptions by asset class as of a decade ago. In red, we show where the assumption has gotten lower relative to a decade ago. In green, we show where it's gotten higher, and in sort of yellow, it's neutral. You can see, over the last decade, it's really been sort of, the trend has been... You can see, over the last decade, it's really been sort of, the trend has been in one direction across asset classes. It's been for lower expected returns. We've seen equity valuations go up as equity markets have rallied strongly over the past decade. We've seen interest rates come down, which leads to lower expectations for bonds. So the end result is sort of lower assumptions across the board on a forward-looking basis. This slide, for me anyway, wasn't showing up very well when I had full screen on. So I apologize, I'm going to zoom out a little bit here so you can see how the slide's supposed to look. I realize it probably makes it a bit smaller on your screen. But one question we often get when we talk about capital market assumptions is, so why should we sort of believe that your assumptions are accurate? That nobody's assumptions have been accurate over the past decade? I think it's a very fair question and it's a good point to raise. I don't know that this 100% answers that question, but it usually gives folks some comfort. And this is data pulled together by a firm called Horizon. Every year, they survey three dozen or so practitioners, so investment consultants, asset managers, et cetera. And they ask them to provide their 10-year forecasts across various asset classes. And so what we've done here is plotted a distribution of forecasts by asset class from those 39 other advisors. And then we've overlaid what our Aon's assumptions are in red sort of on that chart. So the way to read that chart is the black diamond in the center, that's the median asset class forecast from the 39 folks that were surveyed. The blue square, think of that as the 25th to the 75th percentile. And then the ends of the points here are the low in terms of what was submitted to the survey. And so you can see with a couple of exceptions. So maybe looking at commodities here or private debt where the Aon assumption is a bit high. In every other case, the Aon assumption is sort of well within that medium 25th to 75th percentile range. And in most cases, is kind of sort of right in line with the median from the survey. We don't solve for that. Like, we're not trying to have our assumptions be perfectly in line with everybody else's. But I do think it is some helpful context when people say, how should we? Maybe just two other points, and I realize we're running close to time here, and I certainly don't want to eat into Kavanaugh McDonald's time. But two other quick points. First on Slide 13, another question we often get is, so your median forecast for our portfolio is coming in below our assumed return. Why not just build on a portfolio that gets us to our assumed return? Here, we're plotting our forecasted returns and standard deviation by asset class. And then the red line is showing you where, this is for N-Pers. Their assumed return is 7.3. Yours today is 7.5, so just slightly higher. You can see, it would be really, really difficult to build a portfolio that had an average return of 7.5%. The only asset class we think that has a better-than-50/50 chance of getting there over the next decade is private equity. And obviously, you couldn't build a portfolio that was 60, 70, 80% private equity and sort of need liquidity need. So just illustrating the point that we think we're in a period of relatively low capital markets returns on a go-forward basis. And there's, you can only stretch so far to try to get additional return out of your investment portfolio. And then finally wrapping up, I'm sure Kavanaugh McDonald is going to touch on this. And the red line here is for N-Pers. But the broader point I wanted to make is, return assumptions in public fund world have been trending down. It's the same, we're looking at the same distribution chart that we've looked at in the past. This is looking at anywhere from 150 to 200 public pension plans based on the period measured. We're plotting the median return assumption and then the distribution around the median assumed rate on a calendar year basis over the last 20 years. And you can see, 8% was industry standard for just about all of the 2000s. In the 2010s, we started to see assumed rates start to step down. And about every three or four years or so, you'd see the median step down a quarter percentage point. So 8% to 7 and 3/4, to 7 and 1/2, to 7 and 1/4. And our guess would be, in the next year or two, you're going to see the median assumed return get down to 7. So there really has been, I think, in part at least because everyone's capital market assumptions are lower, there has been a movement in public pension fund world to lower assumed rates in recognition that folks are thinking investment portfolios probably aren't going to deliver the same level of returns over the next decade or so relative to what they've delivered over the past decade. So sorry for rambling on a bit there. I think we're at time. Let me go ahead and pause there and happy to open up to any questions or maybe...
Questions for Max? Doesn't look like there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you both.
Next time and first.
We hope.
Thanks, all.
Are you staying on? Are you going to stay on, Michael?
For a little bit.
Okay.
Do I need, you know what, I'll get off so it's easy. Let me do that. Bye, everybody. I mean it, I'll come over and see you. Okay.
All right, so next we'll jump down to Agenda Item Number 5, a discussion on the Kavanaugh McDonald presentation on economic assumptions for OSERS in their 2017 through 2020 experience study. Pat Beckham with Kavanaugh McDonald is here. She's the actuarial technical advisor to OSERS and to N-Pers as well. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read the experience study report. There's a lot of information, a lot of data in there. We're going to condense it quite a bit today to make sure you're not here at 8 o'clock tonight. But just a refresher, because there's so much information included in that experience study, we kind of broke this up into pieces. And some of you were here all the way back to April of this year when we talked about actuarial methods as a way to just sort of give you a primer on that. And then in August, Brian Hoagie and I were here to talk about demographic assumption changes. We made recommendations. We had some cost information for you at that point. Today, we're talking about economic assumptions and we're revisiting the methods. Hopefully, that won't take too long. And we have time, and I want to make sure you all know that. This set of assumptions we'll use for the January 1, 2022 valuation, but we actually won't start that valuation till probably February, somewhere in that timeframe. And so you've got, you know, a couple of months here to noodle on it and kind of decide where you want to go. And if there is additional information you would like to see that we don't have today, we will come back November, December, or January, whatever you prefer, to share that information with you and you can ultimately make a decision. So just a little bit of background. You know, pension funding is an extremely long-term proposition. These benefit payments have a very, very long tail. And they're dependent on a lot of contingent events. A lot of things are going to happen in the future that are going to affect your members' benefits. And we don't know what those are. We don't know what salary increases will be. We don't know when people will retire. We don't know how long they'll live. Those things all have an impact. We know some information today, but we use those actuarial assumptions to kind of bridge the gap between what we know and what we think could happen in the future that will affect the amount of those benefit payments. Those assumptions will have a big impact on the liabilities. And when you hear liabilities, think value of future benefit payments. Because that's what they are. So if you change the future benefit payments, you change the liabilities, and then the costs are reflecting the same thing. If liabilities go up, your costs are going to go up. So these assumptions are very important. They impact kind of timing of contributions. Important thing to remember is, they don't impact the actual benefits that are paid to your members. Okay? And that's the true cost to the system is the benefits that are paid to members. And assumptions are just that. I mean, there's a lot of science and analysis and professional judgment that go into them, but at the end of the day, they're just assumptions. And they, you know, actual experience may very well be different, particularly year-to-year. So because these assumptions are so important, we need to evaluate them and decide, you know, do we keep them? Do we make a minor change? Do we make a major change? This is the process that we do the deep dive into all the information, analyze it, come to you, talk about it, and ultimately make a decision. Our role as the actuary to the board in the system is to make a recommendation, okay? We do all of our analysis, and again, we write it all up, make the recommendation. But we are not fiduciaries. We have no control. We can't make you adopt a certain assumption. You have that control. You are the fiduciary, so you make that decision. And you can, you know, follow our recommendations. You can make some other decisions if that is totally up to you because you have that power. So what we do in the experience study is compare what actually happened in the study period with what we thought was going to happen based on assumptions. It's a little more on the demographic side, and you had a lot of that last time. How many people retired? How many people terminated? Blah, blah, blah. We have a little bit of that, but with economic assumptions, it's so much forward-looking that that, you know, what you earned in the last four years is not going to be valuable to help us set the investment return assumption. And that's the second bullet. You know, past experience can provide strong guidance for certain assumptions. Mortality tends to be one of them. It changes very slowly. But investment return, yeah, that's very much dependent on the current economy and what the outlook is. So you might remember this little graphic. And last time, you know, we were focused on the green columns, the demographic. This time, we're focused on the economic assumptions. So those are things like price inflation, and we'll talk about that one because it touches almost all of the other ones. So it's important, investment return, wage growth, also kind of called general wage increase. It's kind of a cross-the-board increase in wages. Cola, your cola is dependent on inflation, so it gets touched. And then payroll growth, the total amount of payroll on which people are contributing. How does that change over time? And then individual salary increases. Obviously, benefits are related to fine-lot salary, so we need an assumption to project that forward. You might notice, you know, the green, far-right, green column, demographic, a lot of that falls pretty heavily on the actuary. We get into the economics. There's other advisors, you know. You all might have opinions and knowledge. It's our responsibility, but we're not economists. We're not investment consultants. So we solicit that input from other people. So we use a process that's called the building block method. This is under actuarial standards. And you can see, this is just a visual for how that works. So inflation, again, is a component of investment return, of the general wage increase. And then the general wage increase is part of the individual member's salary increase assumption. The important thing is, there's no cherry-picking here. You can't pick a high inflation rate for investment return and a low one for salary increases. It has to be consistent across the board. So, go back for just a minute. I wanted to kind of mention this, and it was in the report as well. And you just heard from, you know, the state investment officer and Aon, who is the investment consultant to the Nebraska Investment Council. And they're investing your money, and at least long-term, that asset allocation is very, very similar, if not the same, as N-Pers, as the Nebraska state retirement system. And we did an experience study for them last year. So the economic assumptions for OSERS are going to look a lot like what they looked like for N-Pers. Okay? Because this is the impact of assumptions that are across, you know, macroeconomic assumptions. This is not unique to your membership like the demographic assumptions were. Only exception is that merit scale on the individual salary increase assumption, that is very specific to Omaha schools. How people's pay progresses as they get additional years of service, additional education, changed jobs, things like that. So a lot of what you're going to see today is consistent with what we shared with N-Pers last year and that they took action on. So your recommendations on inflation, general wage increase, investment return, they're consistent because it doesn't make a lot of sense that, you know, everything else is the same on the investment side, but you would have a different assumed rate of return. So I want to touch on inflation. And again, we, these are forward-looking. So we do look at historical inflation, but it isn't particularly helpful. Over the last 10 years, I think it's been about 1.75%. It's been very low. The outlook, and most of these metrics were, you know, they're a bit of a mixed bag, to be honest. Some of them are at the beginning of this year. The social security report is usually issued in May. That's like a 75-year estimate. So that one is a little more in tune with a pension plan assumption. You can see Aon's 10- and 30-year assumptions are up there. And then Max mentioned the Horizon survey in his comments. And we've got the median from the Horizon survey. We're currently at 2.75. So when you look at sort of all the data, you undoubtedly notice that they're all lower than 2.75. Now, it's interesting because we have seen inflation recently come up and be pretty high. The Fed's saying that's transitory. We won't know for a while, I don't think. But I think the message is, we're probably a little high on inflation and we'd like to make a meaningful change, okay? And N-Pers was also at 2.75. And we recommended they go down 40 basis points to 2.35. And that's what we're recommending for OSERS as well, okay? So we're not going all the way down to 2 or something, even 2 and 1/4. We're trying to maintain a little bit of a hedge, and we prefer to kind of move incrementally as opposed to make some big, gigantic change. So that's the inflation part of that building block that we saw. And Max covered some of this in his comments at the end. Remember, he shared the capital market assumptions for the portfolio. And that's really where this information comes from. And it's pretty interesting because I think it shows you just how wide the returns can be in any single one year. That's what you have on the far-left-hand side. The years are across the top of this graph, 1, 5, 10, 20, 30, 50. So, and then the green bar is the 75th percentile. So again, he talked about a distribution of returns, and that's what we're looking at. When we look at that distribution, 25% of the returns fall above the green line and 25% of the returns fall below the red line. So half, 50%, fall between red line and green line. So half, 50%, fall between red line and green line. But even with that, in one year, there's a 50% chance that the return will be about a minus 1 or a plus 14. I mean, it's huge. That's the challenge of managing a pension fund, right there. If that range was real narrow, our lives would all be easier. But it's not. And so that's the thing. Over time, the highs and the low returns compound, and that range comes down. You know, but even 50 years out, it's still significantly different. You know, it's 5.2 versus 7.4. And if we ran numbers, contribution numbers at those two assumptions, you would see a dramatic difference. Again, I think the message is, there is not, I think Max said about 1 in 3 chance, you know, we're kind of saying about 25%. So that's really not too different. But we don't have a very good chance of meeting our assumption. And when that happens, it means you're, kind of hate to use that phrase, kicking the can down the road, but you're pushing costs to the future. Because what you don't earn today in investment return has to be made up in contribution somewhere down the road. Okay? So that's why investment return is the most powerful assumption, has a huge impact on the valuation results. And we don't just, you know, go to 6.3 because that's what Aon said. They are using those assumptions for a different purpose. They're using them for asset allocation, which is much more short-term focused. So we know those change every year. You heard him say, they change quarterly. It's just the Investment Council doesn't really want to see them quarterly. And if you went back and kind of checked the 10-year periods, their forecasts are not, they don't have a high probability of meeting what the forecast is. It's a difficult business. So that's why we're not, you know, recommending we go to 6.3. But we are recommending that we lower. Directionally, it needs to be lower. It needs to be a meaningful change. And so we'll hold off for a minute on what our recommendation is. I wanted to share this with you. And this echoes a little bit of what Max talked about as well. The 2020 information is, again, what we shared for INPERS last year. And then you see the 63021 information is what Max just went over with you. And as he said, they're not considerably different, either the 10-year or the 30. And then the last two rows, that's that Horizon survey of about three dozen investment consultants. And the median, the middle of the pack, so to speak. And it's interesting, there is a big difference here from 2020 to 2021. And that's because in 2020, those came before the pandemic hit. So we're down about 50 basis points on kind of outlook for the real rate of return. But that is consistent with what Aon's outlook is as well. The investment return assumption is also impacted, or potentially impacted, by how we're handling administrative expenses. So when we talk about investment return, it's always intended to be net of investment expenses. So if you're paying for active management, you know, we assume you're going to earn enough to cover the fees. And there's two approaches on administrative expenses. So these are the expenses that it takes to operate the system. The first is, we call the implicit approach. And that means you kind of skim it off the investment return. Okay? So if you earn, you know, 7.6, but you have 10 basis points of return in expenses, your net return is 7.5. Okay? It just lowers the investment return a little bit. Explicit means it's part of the contribution. And the amount we're trying to bring in that year is close to what we think will be paid out for administrative expenses. It's just real direct. It's part of the contribution. You're going to pay for the benefits that people are earning. You're going to pay for the unfunded liability. And you're going to pay for the administrative cost or expense for that year. So historically, OSERS has used the implicit approach. That was very common. It's been kind of more recently that that is changing. And if we look over the last four years, the administrative expenses are about 0.07% of assets. So that really means you would need to earn 7.57% to net 7.5. This is kind of a nuance that's sometimes kind of hard to understand. The trend in the industry has been to move to explicit. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is, everything with pension funding now is really keyed off transparency. Okay? Easy to see, easy to understand. It isn't, it's right out there. And it's a very direct allocation of that expense. And you're bringing in the money you think you're going to pay out in the year it occurs. And then dear old accounting standards. So when we prepare the GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement, 67 and 8 work that goes into the financial statements for the school district, it requires that we have an explicit component for expense when we basically project the assets out in the future. So that's been another reason, I think, a lot of systems have moved to just putting it in explicit because, for funding, because it has to be done for GASB. Again, INPERS moved to this approach in the last experience study last year. So this will be the first year that they have an explicit component in their contribution rate for administrative expenses. For OSERS, the explicit approach, now, this is really a percent of payroll. And payroll is less than assets, right? So the number's bigger. So it's 24 basis points. 0.24% of payroll is needed to cover the administrative expenses, which were about 881,000. Okay? So again, under this approach, that amount of money, sort of earmarked to cover the expenses that will then go out this year. I know I didn't tell you, but I think you all know me well enough. If you got questions, stop me anytime. All right. So where we're ending up on a recommendation for investment return is 7%. You can see on the left-hand side, the current assumption, again, it's 7 and 1/2, net of investment, net of administrative fees. We're recommending going to 2.35 on inflation and dropping the real rate of return to 4.65. And the administrative fees will be paid directly rather than kind of being taken out of returns. So 7 and 1/2 to 7. And again, that is consistent with what was recommended to the state retirement system and was adopted by their board. We'll talk a little bit later, but they are phasing in their decrease from 7 and 1/2 down to 7 so that it doesn't hit all in one felt swoop. I mentioned earlier that the cost of living cannot exceed actual inflation. And so technically, the cola is impacted by the inflation assumption. However, it's 1 and 1/2 for those that were hired before July of 2013, and 1% for those hired after. So even with our change in inflation from 2.75 to 2.35, it varies, but it doesn't vary wildly like investment return. It means that, you know, the current assumption of 1 and 1/2 is still reasonable for that group and clearly for the group hired after July of 2013. Not expected to vary from 1. All right. So general wage inflation. Easiest way to think about this is, you're probably all familiar with, like, the salary grids, is what I usually call them. For any year, you know, if you're a starting teacher with, you know, a bachelor's degree, you know, zero years of service, bachelors, you know right where they are on that grid, right? Then that may change as you get more years of service and more education. But the general wage would be, how does the grid change from year to year to year to year? So it's driven by price inflation, but also by something called a real wage increase or productivity. That we have seen over long periods of time that wages tend to increase more than pure price inflation. Otherwise, you know, we really wouldn't have any improvement in our standard of living. That has been a half a percent, the real wage increase, excuse me, for OSERS, has been a half percent. And we're recommending that we keep that. But because we're lowering price inflation to 2.35, the general wage inflation, which is the sum of those two, see in the right-hand column, is, we're recommending to 8.5. It's currently at 3.25. That is entirely driven by the change in the price inflation. Okay? Covered payroll, again, is the total payroll on which contributions will be made. So this assumption only impacts, how are you going to pay off the unfunded liability? Okay? Because we are calculating that payment as a percent of payroll over time, we have to model how we think payroll will increase. And again, generally, if the number of bodies is relatively stable, then whatever's happening on the across-the-board increase generally drives covered payroll in the same amount and direction. So again, it's currently equal to the general wage inflation, and our recommendation is we continue that and go with 2.85. All right. Individual salary increase. So this has those two pieces. We just looked at the general wage inflation at 2.85. But now we have a component that is based on service that reflects longevity. People are with the district longer, have more years of service, get more education, you know, they move to be a principal. Those kinds of impacts on individual people's wages. And we need to model that. So we looked at the actual versus the expected salary during this four-year study period. And you can see the results. For the certificated group, the actual increase was 3.85, and the expected increase was 5.39. That difference about 1 and 1/2%. And for the classified group, actual increase, this is, you know, everybody over the four-year period average was 3.05, and the expected was 4.4. However, remember, we've got 2.75 price inflation in there. We certainly during this four-year period did not see that. Was closer to 2. So the expected should be higher than the actual. And we're bringing that price inflation down, and that's going to bring that whole scale down. But we like to look at the pattern and see what's happening, you know, over years of service. So you'll see that the years of service across the bottom of this graph, because there's a very strong correlation to service and salary increases. You tend to get more, well, typically in your shorter duration. This one's relatively flat. And then the percentage increase on the y-axis, the vertical axis. We looked at the bargaining agreements, kind of, you know, get a little more insight. And we did that in the last experience study. It was the first time we observed these long service increase. And you can see that we've kind of built those in now, that when you get 15 years of service, you get a kind of a extra longevity piece of pay, actually. And then at 20, 25, 30, and I think it's 35, too. So we've tried to build that in. Now, you don't see a strong pattern because this is calendar year data and not fiscal year data. I think if we had fiscal year data, we would see it a little more dramatically. But you definitely can see at 15 years, there's kind of a poke up there, and you see it at 25. So again, we're trying to model how this is going to, how these salaries will change in the future for your current active members so that we can estimate the benefits based on that salary. So we have a decline in expected salary was 5.39 for certificated. We're moving down to 4.83. And then for classified, again, you see the little peaks, and those are their kind of long-service increment pay. We're going from 4.4 down to 4.19. And again, we like to be a little cautious and not go too crazy on changing this because this is a fairly powerful assumption, at least for the actives. So summary of the recommended economic assumptions. You can see the current on the left-hand column, and then the proposed. So again, just to summarize quickly, price inflation, 2.35. Investment return from 7 and 1/2 down to 7. General wage inflation, covered payroll, down from 3 and 1/2 to 2.85. Cost of living, no change. And then individual salary is a decrease, but kind of how much varies by age. Again, INPERS is phasing in over several years. This is a very popular concept because it's a little easier to take smaller bites than it is to just wham, go there and take that full impact. So just in general, the cost impact, price inflation is a hard one to say because it touches all those other assumptions. And so if you lower it, you're lowering your investment return, but you're lowering your salary increase, and that one's a bit of a wild card. But investment return, if you decrease that, you increase liabilities and costs. Again, with wages, if they're lower, then projected salaries and benefits are lower. That lowers liabilities and costs. The merit scale works in a similar fashion. If you lower the merit scale, generally, you will lower projected salaries and benefits and lower liabilities. And then cost of living is a surprisingly important assumption. And we did not change that for you guys. But if you decrease it, obviously, if people get lower colas, right, then their benefits are lower, liabilities are lower. You get the theme. So this is showing you what the cost impact was for each assumption that we changed. With full disclosure, that the order that you measure them impacts the change, how big the change is. So, this is really hard to see. You can see in the far left, the baseline was 27.53% in the 2021 valuation. We won't use new assumptions till 2022, but this is the most recent information we have to measure, so. And then we shared this with you last time, the demographic, all the demographic changes decrease the costs a little bit, 27.16. And then if we just change that merit scale, it drops it a little bit to 26.88. And price inflation, you know, drops it a little bit to 26.73. And then when we put the administrative expenses directly in to the contribution rate, that increases it to just under 27. But you can see the big ones, the 7%. That's, it's easy to see that that's the biggest impact, and it almost always is. That's the most powerful assumption that we use. So, this, again, last time, we showed you the baseline and then all demographic changes. So this time, on the far right, we've added the economic with the demographics. So this is basically saying, what would the 1121 valuation have looked like if we used the new, the recommended set of assumptions? Okay? So it would have increased the liabilities to 2.5. So it would have increased the liabilities to about 2.5 billion, and the unfunded goes from 9.13 to just over a billion. The funded ratio goes down from 61.6% down to 59.2. And then you can see the various components of the contribution. Let's point one thing out here. I knew I was going to do that. So you you see the .24 in kind of the right, the middle of that far-right column down, there's the normal cost rate of 13.35, and then the next row down, that's the administrative expenses. Okay? That, and you'll notice in in the baseline, that did not exist. And then we've got the payment on the unfunded liability. So the total is 29.78. The fixed contribution rates in statute for the members, the district and the state, total 21.66. And the rest that's left over is the additional district contribution. So if you, you know, swallowed the pill all at once, you go from 5.87 to 8.12, and it's about an $8 million impact, which is why we have the next slide.
Is, uh, do you know, is there a different, could you go back? Is there?
I'm sorry.
Yep. Is there a different statutory contribution rate for, like, the OPS features versus Npers?
For the what?
Uh, the rest of the state. Is there, are there, is there one statutory contribution rate? Okay.
Yes, it's, it's. The statutory contribution is the same for OSERS as the school retirement system. The big difference, though, is if there's an additional contribution here, the school district, Omaha Public Schools, pays that. If there is in the state system, the state pays it. All right. So this is one, this is one possibility. Kind of noisy, isn't it? I don't know what's causing that. This one kind of syncs OSERS up with the state. So they they got a head start on you, because they did their experience study a year ago. So they were phasing in over four years. This is phasing in over three. Okay? Because Npers will get to their ultimate 7% in the 2024 valuation. Is it me? Sorry. I might just mention why she's doing that. Their phase in was the 40 basis points on inflation. That's what Nebraska, how they, how they phased it in, is they they stepped down 10 basis points a year for four years, and that's because the experience study is performed every four years. That's okay. Okay. Better? Sounds better, yeah. Okay. So again, this is essentially phasing in over three years, but you're taking your biggest jump the first year to sort of catch up to where Nebraska is. You don't have to do that. Again, if there's other things you want to see, we'll bring it back. But you have to start somewhere. So that's what this one is. And again, by the time we get to the 1124 valuation, we will be fully phased in. The state school system will get there with the July 124. They have a different valuation date than you do. All right. And this is the cost impact.
I guess I have a, I'm sorry, a question, and if you don't have the answer, that's okay. I'm just kind of curious. On the slide that shows immediate implement implementation, we have some given assumptions, and then we have, you know, all of them change at the same time. And it goes from 22 million to 30 million, roughly.
Yeah.
Do you have anything, or can you mention, on this three-year phase in, assuming we start at 22 million, where would we be if we phased it in? Something that shows me what those dollar amounts would be?
Yeah. I think this is, thank you, Jane.
Well played. Thank you.
Perfect timing for that question. Yeah, black and white. Yeah, that's what this is is trying to show, is, so this is a projection that, of course, assumes that all assumptions are met in the future. And it's intended, the value is that it's comparative. So you can see in 2021, that valuation's already been done, right? So we're not changing that. The additional district contribution's 22.2 million. But you can see when we move to 2022, that goes up, if you do the immediate, it goes up to almost 32 million. And then it goes to 33 and 34, and that's, that's kind of asset, asset smoothing working. But if you do the three-year phase in, that's the bottom row. So for 2022, we'd be just under 28 million instead of 32. And then it steps up to 31 in the 2023 valuation, and 34.2 in the 2024 valuation. Okay? So you, you, you know, you're pretty close by the time you get to 24, you're just kind of stepping stones, doing it that way. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I just want to follow up. So if we didn't do it in the increments that you've outlined here, if we did it over a longer period of time, or we did a big jump to begin with, or a little jump to begin with, or something like that, that doesn't really change the stability of the pension fund, because those, if we do a little bit of a change now, for example, our arc would be lower. But it'll catch up with us eventually. Am I got that right?
It will, but the the little phrase is, you know, pay me now or pay me later. But if you pay me later, it's with interest, it's higher.
Right.
Yeah, if you put more in, you actually play, pay less in nominal dollars. But you're right, if you if you phase it in, and you'll see even a little bit here, if you phase it in, in 2024, you've got to put 34.2 million in instead of 34.1. And then you'll have to, it'll be higher for, you know, several more years. Yes, and you could phase it in over four years. Again, that's kind of the 10 basis points. You could have less the first year and more the se, I mean, you know. But I think the the key here is, we'd really like to see it be seven by the time the next experience study would be scheduled. Now, it's a little strange, because, you know, you're moving to become part of the state retirement system. So whether your experience study will be in 2025, or rolled into theirs in 2024, or that one might get skipped, I, you know, because yours is not in statute, or.
Might we end up?
Yeah, yours is, but it's every four years in statute, so.
So we could end up with two in one year, almost, right?
Well.
Our, the last OSERS year would be December 31st, and then we go into Npers, and then we get a half-year valuation again?
Well, I I think the valuation date will stay January 1. I haven't heard anything about that changing.
No, no, no. I thought that's what you were saying. Never mind. Thank you.
No, I was thinking the timing of the experience study, Jane, I'm sorry.
No.
That, because they did theirs in 2020, their next one will come in 2024. But we typically do those in the the fall and and early winter. But whether they would tackle that, you know, whether, whether they want to add you in in 2020, late 2024, or just let you go on your regular schedule in 2025 and then deal with it the next round, who knows? I mean, that's, that's totally their call.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, if you weren't fully to seven by then, it's up to them, you know, what they want to do. So, yeah, there are lots of options, and, you know, we just didn't want to do a lot of work not knowing what the board's pleasure was. So you can let us either now, if you know, or you can, you know, go through Cecilia, and she can get in contact with us, so we can bring that back.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're going to kind of change gears, if that's okay. And I'm going to try to move through this, these actuarial methods, which compose the funding policy fairly quickly. Basically, there's three methods. One is called an actuarial cost method, which just says, we're going to fund this, these benefits over time. How are we going to come up with how much goes in every year? Okay? That's the cost method. Then the asset smoothing method, because market value is so volatile, we use something that just mitigates the impact of the ups and downs. And that's the smoothing method. We'll talk about that. And then the amortization. Is it on now? No. All right. Nope, still not on. I could talk really loud if you want me to. I would not want your job, hon. Did you unplug it? Hello? Yep, it's working. All right. We don't have too much to go. We'll go fast. All right. The third one is, is how we're going to amortize or pay off the unfunded actuarial liability. All right. So those are the three methods that we need to talk about. Just a quick comment, as with all the work we do, we have professional standards, they're called actuarial standards of practice, and as credentialed actuaries, we are required to follow those. We we want to anyway, because they provide guidance and kind of a really good framework for the process and considerations that we should be thinking about as we're coming to these recommendations. And there are specific ASOPS, as we call them, on the asset valuation method. An AESOP-4 is guidance on the cost method and amortization. And there's a relatively new, in fact, it's still an exposure draft out on the, on AESOP-4 with changes on amortization. And then we get, look to guidance from other sources, GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, the Conference of Consulting Actuaries, and the Society of Actuaries, all have provided guidance on what they think is important for pension, public pension plan funding. Interestingly, on the private side, corporate plans, the IRS mandates a lot there, so actuaries don't have a lot of freedom. The cost method that we're using is entryage normal. We've used that for a long time. That is the same method that the state retirement system uses. It is used by most, maybe not all, but most heavily, heavily, like 90-plus, 95% of the public plans. And it just basically says, we're going to fund the benefits by paying a level percent of payroll over a person's working career. The payroll, the dollars of contributions to finance the benefit grow, but the percent of payroll is level, and that's the attraction there. We use that for the financial reporting calculations as well. And I think that it was always been the most common, but when Gatsby went to requiring this, that kind of sealed the deal. Smoothing methods, because we'll spend a little bit of time talking about smoothing methods today. I mentioned this earlier, you know, you could use market value, but wow, would you have some swings in your funded ratio and your contributions, and it's not pretty. So we use a smooth value. We we kind of give the ups and downs in the market a chance to average out, and that smooth value is called the actuarial value of assets. And then we we use that to calculate the funded ratio, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, which then ultimately factors into the actuarial contribution. So we're bringing more stability, which makes sense, because we have this extremely long-term obligation. So measuring assets one day out of the year is not a perfect type of measurement. So again, the actuarial standard of practice on on smoothing, the smoothing method says that the actuarial value should bear a reasonable relationship to the market value. So it it should be a market-related value. And it needs to produce values within a reasonable range around market, or recognize a difference between market in a reasonable amount of time. And then you've got an alternate rule that you can, you can use that's in the bottom there. The method that we're using now is sometimes one that's kind of hard to communicate, but I really do like it. It's really a weighted average. It's 75% of the expected value, which just means if the assumption was met, that's how we calculate the expected value. If we're assuming seven and a half return, then we look at the beginning balance, contributions that came in, benefit payments that went out, and we we grow it at seven and a half. And then we take 25% of the actual market value. So it, again, it's that weighted weighted average. And the reason I like it is, it's smooth, but it sort of bounces back or converges back to market value a little more quickly. We've used this method for a long time. It's smooth, it does its job, but it's not four-year smoothing. The 25% throws people off. It's not, in four years, your actuarial value will not be equal to your market value. And think about it, if you were moving, if I was moving from here to the wall, I I won't get there. In fact, I could move a fourth of the way forever and theoretically never really reach the raw, the wall. And and that's the harder part to understand. The other really common method is is the one that Npers uses, and theirs is in statute. And it's a, what we call a closed five-year smoothing. So in five years, the actuarial value will be equal to the market value with this method. Okay? So we we look at the difference between the actual dollar amount of return and the expected return, and that difference, we just recognize evenly over five years, 20% per year. Okay? We shared this with with the board earlier this year when we talked about smoothing methods. And, you know, we've, we've wrestled with this beast numerous times in the past, you know, should you, you know, should, should you move to the state, the state method or or not? And there's not a right or a wrong. And you can see in this graph, the black is the market value. So over time, it moves a whole lot more. The red line is is Nebraska's method, the closed, the five-year closed. And the blue line is the current method, that weighted average method. And you can see, I mean, sometimes the red line's above the blue line, sometimes the blue line's above the red line, but you know what? They're, they're just kind of moving in the same direction, and they kind of catch up with each other. So there, there really isn't a right or a wrong. We recognize that with the administration of the plan, moving to the state retirement system. system, you might want to be consistent in the methods that you use. That's fine with us. The current method actually does a good job of smoothing as well. They, they each have kind of pros and cons, so it really depends on what you want to do.
So, but if we change that smoothing mechanism or method, does it have any impact on, you know, the, the step down that we talked about?
Well, it, it will have an impact because your actuarial value will not be the same. And we, to be honest, Pat, I'm sorry, but we haven't, we haven't calculated that, but we can come back with that and model it if you'd like to.
No, uh, just as we kind of think about, you know, as we hit the date where it moves into Npers, is it, is it, you know, I, I don't want us to land with a thud, I want us to glide and, you know? And so is there any work that needs to be done today relative to this? Because I think when it transfers over, then it'll, you know, they'll obviously go to the Npers method. Is there anything that would make it, you know, um, any work that needs to be done to make that an easier transition, I guess, is the question?
Well, I'll speak as the actuary for the state retirement system and say, yes, it would probably be easier if you made this change before you, you moved there. And it seems to me that this, you know, makes sense for the change to be implemented with the assumption changes.
Okay, I guess I'd say don't go to any work today.
Yeah.
I think it's something we need to be cognizant of and have, have as a parking lot or something.
Yeah. And we could work that into the projections that we, we share with you whenever we do come back.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Because I'm not sure I understand why it is easier for them when we get there to change now. Because not to minimize at all what you're doing, but it's quote, "just a matter of what numbers you plug in where," right? And so if we start doing it with our valuation now, how does that make it easier for them? Because they, the evaluation we do every year doesn't have any effect on how they do it, right?
Right. But when you think about transition, it's kind of like, what if you were at eight percent and they're at seven? There, there's, there's work to be done to, to sort of bring, bring both plans kind of into alignment from an assumptions and a method standpoint. It isn't, yeah, mathematically, it's not hard at all.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, my guess is that there might be other kind of administrative things that have to be addressed. But it, it isn't, it isn't difficult. It's just, if you do it now, there's one less thing that somebody else has to worry about in 2024.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But like I said, we're, I mean, we're, we're fine either way. We're fine either way.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. But I think they will want, at least eventually, to have everything on the same basis because, you know, if you're a trustee and now they'll have six plans, you don't want to have to remember, oh, yeah, that one's always different when it comes to the smoothing method. Because that affects all the calculations.
Oh, no, I understand that. I guess when we get there, we'll all be on the same method. But between now and then, the method we're on, that, that's what I was just trying to figure out. Because we will be, we will have to decide whether to go to that method or not.
Yes.
And I'm going to have to ask more questions later, but...
Right. And you probably want to see the cost impact. I mean, I would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. All right. Um, on amortization, um, again, this is essentially, how are you going to come up with the, the payment schedule on the unfunded liability to extinguish that over time? And we talked before that those payments are, are increasing because, in dollars, because they're a percent of payroll and we expect payroll to increase over time. We also are using what's called a layered amortization method, which simply means every year, whatever happens to the unfunded that we didn't plan on, we, we create a separate payment schedule for that piece. And then we have multiple pieces of UAL, each with their own payment, and we sum them all up and divide by payroll. And that's our unfunded liability contribution rate. We have been using a thirty-year closed period for each base. Okay? So it's closed, which means the base that was set up, you know, in twenty seventeen at thirty years, in twenty twenty-one is down to twenty-six years. But the one we set up this year for twenty twenty-one is thirty years. So you, you got a whole mixed bag, so to speak. But every one of them will be paid off at the end of the thirty years for that piece, that tranche. Thirty years was common, very, very common for a very long time, but it is out of vogue. And all the guidance from experts like the Government Finance Officers Association, the Conference of Consulting Actuaries, the Actuarial Standard Board, um, you know, the American Academy of Actuaries are all encouraging shorter periods. The idea is if, if you are having experience that is different than what you're assuming, you ought to try to pay that difference off while the current members are actively working. And active members kind of expected working lifetime, because all of them aren't sticking around, is generally around fifteen to twenty years. So if you read some of those papers, you'll see that, that that's sort of the sweet spot. And I would say most plans are using twenty. That's kind of, fifteen gets kind of short. The period gets short, the contribution gets volat- volatile. Again, we have the third exposure draft of Actuarial Standard of Practice number four that has, for the first time, some, some real guidance on amortization policy. Wasn't in AESOP four before this. And they've modified it a little bit, but they haven't really moved away from the basic premise, which says that, you know, you should be paying this off, amortizing this over a reasonable period, or you should be at least reducing the balance. They really don't like the fact that when you amortize as a level percent of payroll, which we are, over a long period, which thirty years is, the dollar amount of the unfunded actually increases because your payment is small in the early years and you're not paying the interest on, on the unfunded. So the dollar goes up before it starts to come down. That, it's not so popular anymore. All of our actuarial standards do not have any kind of a bright line test, so it's not going to say thirty years is, mm, not going to work. But you can read between the lines, what's in there, and thirty is going to be problematic. So what we're thinking is that we need to move to twenty or twenty-five-year closed period instead of thirty. So that does shorten the period of time over which the dollar amount of the unfunded liability grows. Lowering the investment return assumption also will help with that. I think, you know, for the state, they went with twenty-five. And I think, you know, we can really justify that because we're trying to keep that contribution level. You know, that's the statutory contribution rates, um, over long periods of time from kind of an equity standpoint. And so I think, you know, at least I can argue, um, that the twenty-five would be reasonable. And we would implement that prospectively. Okay? So we won't go back to the one that we just created in twenty twenty-one and say, oh, sorry, that was going to go over twenty-five. We'll leave it. Five years from now, they'll all be twenty-five or shorter, and that'll, that'll be fine. Npers passed legislation to accomplish this. I'm not an expert, but as I read the statutes, I think that decision lies with the board. And, um, you know, your, your amortization policy is part of your funding policy. So our recommendation on methods, continue to use entry age, asset smoothing, either one is fine. We can model that if you're interested to see the impact. And then on amortization, again, moving to twenty-five with, with the base, base or bases that are established in the twenty twenty-two valuation. So you might want to know, well, what does that do to contributions? Right? And that's what we have on this slide. On slide thirty-nine, on the left-hand side, you have the actuarial statutory and then the shortfall, um, which is the additional district contribution rate under the thirty years. And then you've got twenty-five years on the, the next three columns. And then the far right-hand column is the, the difference as a percent of pay. So you can see, you know, if you go out, it's, you know, it's around twenty basis points in the contribution rate. It would be more dramatic if you went to twenty, obviously, pay it off over twenty years. Um, and this is, is the projection. And again, the blue bars, um, is, is the employer contribution, the district's payroll-related contribution. And then the two percent of pay is the, we get from the state, is, is the green. And then the red is the additional district. And, you know, no big surprise, I mean, we expected to need additional district contributions for a long time. And so with the twenty-five, it kind of depends on whether you have favorable experience or not. Because if you're having gains and you recognize them over twenty-five years, it actually lowers the contribution. If you have losses, it increases the contribution. Theoretically, over time, you should have both, and then they would kind of net each other out. And this just says that we're credentialed actuaries, so that's important.
We couldn't tell.
Any questions? Comments?
Any questions? Megan, you have anything? Any questions? Okay. All right, excellent. Pat, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move down to the executive director's report. Cecilia?
Certainly. You'll notice this month, we did not address the financial statements for OZERS for the month of August. And that is because that is our, um, OZERS fiscal year end, and our audit is in progress. This occurs every year, so we'll see those numbers in December with the final audit. Director Gurke and I have met with others of our respective teams. We met again in September. The big takeaway from that meeting is that Npers is continuing to work on engaging a project manager for this transition, which is effective September one, twenty twenty-four. And that's the administration transitioning over to Npers. For our retirees, the medical COLA pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute, Section seven-nine dash nine, comma, one zero three, was paid to eligible retirees on the October third, twenty twenty-one pension payment. This is a supplemental, to our new board members to help understand, this is a supplemental COLA began, which began back in October of twenty twenty-one by statute, and is only applicable to retirees of tiers one and two. So retirees, future retirees out of tiers three and four are not eligible for this supplemental COLA. Eligibility is when an annuitant has attained ten years of retirement through the October adjustment date. Every year, the COLA is adjusted in October. And this is having attained ten years of retirement, not in the tenth year. The formula for the supplemental annuity is based on having retired with twenty or more years of credible service and receiving ten dollars for each year retired. Their annuitant, if the annuitant retired with less than twenty years of credible service, the medical COLA is adjusted proportionately. For example, someone who's retired with twenty years of credible service, receiving ten dollars for each year retired after ten years, would receive a supplemental COLA of one hundred dollars. And then the next year, it would go up another ten dollars, and so their supplemental COLA would be a hundred and ten. Conversely, if somebody retired with only fifteen years of credible service, their COLA works out proportionately to seven dollars and fifty cents per year retired, or seventy-five dollars. And then the twelfth year, it would go up to eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. The maximum benefit under this annuity is twenty-five years of receiving the COLA, COLA, and/or up to two hundred and fifty dollars per month. So from a holistic perspective, the addition of this COLA to our monthly pension this year added thirty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars per month. The annuity benefit does not pass to the, a surviving annuitant or beneficiary. So upon the death of the retiree, the monthly benefit is adjusted to remove the medical COLA from all future payments. The next thing to report to the board is, remember, pursuant to, is the allowable indirect cost. Section seven-nine dash nine, one fifteen permits OPS to assess OZERS for expenses associated with indirect cost of administering the plan. That is, uh, our first year that this was permissible, it was a very high number. Last year, the, um, the assessment was a hundred and nineteen thousand and change. We had a discussion with OPS Accounting over the formula that was being used, and we all concurred that all investment-related expenses would no longer be assessed as an additional, excuse me, as the indirect cost. And so last year, our indirect cost came down from a hundred and nineteen to forty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars. So now this year, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, um, using the revised formula, our indirect cost is forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Okay? This is a line item that I don't see until after August thirty-first. Let's see. Finally, the OZERS, uh, audit of financial statements are on track and are scheduled for a December board meeting presentation. There has been much, uh, information going back and forth between the Nick and Sim Johnson. So we're on track. And then I will do the operational issues over the next week or two. And we should, as I said, we should be ready on track for Sim Johnson to file our audited financials with the state, the first part of November, and then a presentation to the boards. That ends the executive director report.
All right. And thank you, Cecilia. Are there any questions for Cecilia? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Cecilia. We'll move down to agenda item number seven, trustees' report. This is an opportunity for the trustees to bring up any matter with other trustees that they feel is appropriate. All right. Okay, seeing none. We're going to jump down to number eight, discussion action on payroll, retirements, death refunds, and accounts payable. Cecilia sent that out to the board previously?
Okay. We are short a quorum, so we really can't take a vote, but let me just share the information. For the month of October, the administrative accounting for OZERS is as follow. Pension payroll in the amount of eleven million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand to fifty-two hundred retirees or payees. Staff payroll for thirty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars. Four new retirements with the first pension check payable November third, adding eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars to the pension payroll. There were eight deaths terminating, um, a total of sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars off the payroll due to the death of the retiree. But there was one joint survivor annuity that was continued in the amount of thirteen hundred and forty dollars. There were fifteen refunds to former OPS employees in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one dollars, nine hundred, three hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. And for accounts payable for the month of October, there was a total of twenty-six thousand, forty-three dollars. You will note that the information I sent out yet, uh, earlier, there was an additional accounts payable for our death research in, of covering the months of May through September. That ends the report, but I do want to remind this transition board that this accounting information does get submitted to the OPS Board of Education for processing, so they will approve it at a, at a later date as well.
All right, thank you. Next board meeting, next OZERS meeting is Thursday, November forty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.